So yeah. She really worked her heart on Friday. PT and OT, the real bar, so. But she, um, she walked, um, about twelve feet with the, you know, with the parallel bars, but she, yeah.
First step she's taken since February, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yep. Bacon's here.
Bacon's here.
What's that? No, it's all from the road, so it's just mobility, motor skills.
It's still similar. I mean, however many plans you want, I'll give them sign.
Ninety-one.
Of the last one from him was a baby.
So, okay. And you've been good since? Good? Right, right.
At the front podium?
I went to a murder scene.
Yeah, you act like I got out.
I know, I know. You've been telling them it's been off because they go up. There's a huge difference between talking to this one if we really get close to it here and if we're already.
And it's not utilities, but there's something in the bay area.
I don't know, yes, maybe.
So where I can go back there and figure out.
You go task or anything.
I know about a certain word.
It could be dangerous.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Well, I got out of the hospital.
Oh, sure. Yes, it'd be good if it gets signed, so it's just in your file.
Oh.
You, I don't even, no, we don't need a paper.
I never had no problem with it.
How you doing? Good to see ya.
Yeah, she had, um, this has been so long.
Hey, you got it down. You have got it down.
Now they think it's about seventy-five minutes.
Yeah. We just need to make sure the signature box, did you look at this?
Yes.
They're gonna monitor and see. They're not sure if they've been doing anything, but they said the left is flowing really heavy, so they're probably not gonna use it at all.
Yes, because you've got the other paper ownership. Planning commission.
City, city. That's all my room.
You don't need me.
Yes.
We're in.
Well, it'll be a digital copy, we don't have to have a hard copy, so.
Buddy just had one.
Brilliant.
He's coming to have my words.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we need to file a copy, it's only.
Yeah, it takes a while for it to be processed.
But we'll have to get our mayor, city clerk.
It's amazing what the board can do, though.
Well, that will be the, you guys are gonna sign the owner's section and then the planning chairman, Darren, he'll sign the planning commission section, and then the mayor and city clerk will sign their section, then you'll take it and file it, and he'll give you a copy. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sure.
Lisa will collect the signatures and let you know when they're ready, and then, yeah, and then she'll give you a call, and then you guys just take it to county and file it, and then send us a copy, you're good.
Okay, keep me on track.
I hope.
Thank you all. Thanks for short writing.
I love that. Secretism. He is so, he's as sweet as we thought. He is. He's home. He's on the street.
He's up in arms about.
Yeah, I had like one voice in this place, I suppose. Teacher.
I've never done that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I see. I don't think it's, no.
Down the river.
He said. I never know. Okay.
Do you have a vote with your?
Okay, true. Um, are these yours? No, they're extras. Okay. I, I mean, I was gonna have to, and I grabbed Brian's stuff. Yeah, Brian's done that.
Let me do the invocation.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, everybody, if you'll make sure your microphones are on and pointed in the appropriate direction. It is six o'clock according to our clock on the wall here, so we call the Board of Zoning Adjustments to order. If you please rise for the invocation of the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day that you've given us and taken care of us, watched over us, provided for us, Lord. We ask this evening that you help us make the right decisions for the cities and for the citizens as well. We give you all the glory in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
James Walker.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Tony Kostaroski.
Here.
Frank Mosivnik.
Here.
Brian Clark. Marky Mabson. Tim Cox.
Here.
And Chase Hendricks.
Here.
Uh, we have quorum.
All right. Okay, uh, you have the minutes of our last board meeting from October twentieth in your packets. Unless there are any corrections needing made, I'll accept a motion to approve those as written.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly made and seconded, roll call, please.
James Walker.
Yes.
Chase Hendricks.
Yes.
Tony Kostaroski.
Yes.
Frank Mosivnik.
Yes.
Tim Cox.
Yes.
And Darren Brock.
Yes.
Minutes of ten twenty twenty-five as written are approved.
All right, we have two items of new business in the Board of Zoning Adjustments agenda. Both of them will require a public hearing. Our first one is a one eighty-nine Empire LLC, and, uh, this is a request for a variance. We have someone representing that here. Come on up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're asking for this evening, please.
Let's you.
Hello, everyone, Josh Haley with ESI here. Uh, tonight, we're asking for a variance, um, to code for where, uh, frontage and drives along that frontage. We're having to have two drive entrances for our development, uh, per international fire code, and so that's the purpose of the variance request, is to be able to have those two drives and, uh, get the variance for the frontage and drive lengths. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, so the variance requested is for two accesses. Our code allows you to have one access off the street, but due to fire code requirements, there's a need for a second access because there's over thirty units on the property. And so fire code is kind of directing this to where, uh, a variance is being requested to meet that need, so. We'll open a public hearing at this time at six oh three. If anyone would like to speak either for or against the granting of this variance, we'd love to hear that. Come on up to the microphone, we'll give you two minutes. All right, seen none, we'll close the public hearing. Six oh three. All right, back up here, please, sir, and I'll open it up for any questions that may have on the board.
I think the fire department takes, uh, takes a lead on this, so.
The life safety definitely trumps any of our code.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I think there's definitely a, a, a reason to have a variance here, uh, with a, with a need with the fire code, so. All right, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll say.
Second it.
All right, we have a motion properly made and seconded to approve the variance, roll call, please.
Frank Mosivnik.
Yes.
Chase Hendricks.
Yes.
James Walker.
Yes.
Tim Cox.
Yes.
Tony Kostaroski.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Motion to approve one eighty-nine Empire LLC variance from section sixteen dash two fifty-five access management standards approved.
All right, it's nice when it's that clear cut.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, our next item on the board is the Providence Classical Christian Academy, and this is another variance request for land alteration guidelines. Give us, give us your name, address, and tell us what we're asking for specifically here.
My name is Dan Cole with Sand Creek Engineering, rising the large-scale project for this, it's still, um, in their view process, working towards plans. What we're asking for is to deviate from a three-to-one maximum slope to a two-to-one on the eastern boundary, and we have a couple of different conditions that are prompting us to bring this to you. We have the existing sewer line that precludes any kind of retaining wall reinforcement extending into the easement, and we also have some of the site's natural tree canopy we'd like to preserve. So, in essence, what we're doing with a two-to-one slope that allows us to stay out of the utility easement for the sewer line and also preserve that tree canopy at the toe of the slope by tightening that window that our slopes extend to. So that's the, uh, that's what we're asking for, is that two-to-one. We also had a geotechnical engineer, we do have a member from GTS here to answer any technical questions if you have any on that for its suitability and constructability.
All right, so we're asking for basically to allow a steeper slope than what code currently allows for the reason of the, the sewer utility, uh, variance there, I mean, uh, easement there, and then you want to not have to take out trees that are currently existing. All right, if you step back for just a moment, let me open up a public hearing here at six oh six. If anyone would like to speak either for or against the granting of this variance to allow this steeper slope on this one edge of the property. Come on up, I'll give you two minutes. All right, seen none, we'll close this public hearing. If you step back up here, please, sir, I'll open it up to the board. See what kind of questions we might have.
Is, um, city staff okay with the proposal? No problem?
With the geotech recommendation and some other safety measures, yes.
So then we, I would just recommend that we state that in the, that is, condition is based on the, what'd you call it, geotech? Sorry.
The engine, you can just say the engineered solution.
Yeah, the engineered solution with the additional requirements that you just stated.
Okay.
Got a motion, Tony? Yeah, if nobody has any questions, yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the variance with, um, the engineering specs and the additional items that were just mentioned.
I'll second.
All right. Ready for a vote, then? Roll call, please.
Frank Mosivnik.
Yes.
Chase Hendricks.
Yes.
James Walker.
Yes.
Tim Cox.
Yes.
Tony Kostaroski.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Motion to approve Providence Classical Christian Academy variance from section sixteen dash one twenty-two five land alteration guidelines is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for the Board of Zoning Adjustments, that concludes all of our agenda. We have no old business, no rulings, staff decisions. I'll accept a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Take one of those as a second.
Yep, I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we will move directly to our planning commission meeting now at six oh eight. Get my other agenda open here. Roll call, please.
James Walker.
Here.
Brian Clark is absent. Frank Mosivnik.
Here.
Tony Kostaroski.
Here.
Tim Cox.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Chase Hendricks.
Here.
We have quorum.
All right, oh, you have the minutes of our previous planning commission meeting from the third of this month. Unless there are any corrections needing made, I'll accept a motion to approve those as written.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve those, roll call, please.
James Walker.
Yes.
Tim Cox.
Yes.
Frank Mosivnik.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Tony Kostaroski.
Yes.
Brian Clark. He's absent, excuse me.
He's absent, yes.
Chase Hendricks.
Yes.
Um, motion to approve the minutes of eleven three twenty-five as written are approved.
All right, uh, at this time, we have our public forum, this is when we open up the microphone for the public to be able to bring anything to our attention you think is needed. This is not one of the public hearings, we have four public hearings on the agenda, so this is not a public hearing. This is just a time when we, uh, open up the microphone to, for you to bring things to our attention that we may not be aware of, so. If anyone would like to speak, come on up, and I'll give you two minutes. All right, seen none, we'll close public forum. Let's go to old business, we don't have any, but we have five items from our new business tonight. The first, uh, the first one is the only one that does not require a public hearing, so we will have four, four public hearings on our five items this evening. The first item we have is a lot split at three oh five East Monroe and one oh seven South Lincoln Street. So, do we have someone here representing that?
Yes, sir.
Come right on up, sir. Give us your name, address, and, uh, give us a detail of what we're looking at.
Ryan Sherwood, uh, I live on Creekside Drive in Rogers. The property concern is the, uh, old post office on, that faces Monroe and the, uh, three-unit building I built facing Lincoln, uh, a few years ago. I can't remember exactly when it was, but it's been, it's twenty years ago, probably. And there was one point four acres there originally, and, uh, uh, I'm at an age, it's time to sort of shed a little property, to be honest with you, so I'm gonna need to sell the church portion of it and keep the back building for a few years, and that's what I'm asking for, basically.
Okay. All right, well, I think it's an interesting situation that we have two different businesses facing two different directions with two different street addresses on one piece of property.
Right.
Probably overdue, but I'll open it up for any questions that you have, commissioners. We're looking at a lot split to separate these two lots, uh, separate these two, they each have a business on each piece of the property that will be after the split, but do you have any questions?
That looks pretty straightforward.
I think this cleans up a pending issue there of having two businesses on one piece of property to start with, anyway. All right, someone like to?
If you have any question, I'll make a motion to approve the lot split.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly made and seconded to approve the lot split, roll call, please.
James Walker.
Yes.
Tim Cox.
Yes.
Frank Mosivnik.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Tony Kostaroski.
Yes.
And Chase Hendricks.
Yes.
Motion to approve Sherwood Lot Split is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, the next item we have is the Ching Studio LLC. This is a public hearing for a conditional use permit at five hundred Ash Street. Hello, give us your name and address, and tell us what we're looking at this evening.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Chan, I'm a resident in Rogers, Arkansas. Uh, so here, I'm here today to request a permit for short-term rental at five hundred Ash Street. Yes, thank you.
Okay. So looking for a conditional use permit, uh, to operate an Airbnb on Ash Street at the address of five hundred Ash Street. Okay, this does require a public hearing, so you'll just hold on just a moment before I open it up to the commissioners. I will open this up to the public, so if you'd like to speak for or against the granting of this, you get two minutes to speak, and I'll just open that up here at six twelve. Come on up to the microphone, and I'll, uh, give you your two minutes, give us your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Eugene Hunley, friends know me as Chip. We live at, my wife and Becky and I live at six twenty-one Prairie Street in the Prairie Meadows Edition that this is in. We began leasing the home and bought it, uh, from the owner two years later because it was and is a friendly, nice, neat, and quiet neighborhood. I'd like to start by asking a couple of questions of you commissioners, if I might. We're in wards three and four. Who, who are our commissioners?
Uh, the, yeah, I mean, the commissioners don't serve in wards like the city councilmen do, but we live in the different wards, but.
Okay, so you live in our ward?
Five sixteen Prairie.
Okay, all righty, good. So, thank you. And since you live there, you know what the neighborhood's like, huh? All right. Did you notice it's a well-kept neighborhood, families of young folks with children, families of older and retired, we are. Notice I use the term neighborhood and not housing addition or other per, impersonal description. That's because we have actual neighbors, we know each other's names, kids' names, grandkids, and dogs. I tell you this because we care about each other, and we care about what happens in our neighborhood. Now, we've gathered a group of us in hopes you'll consider our request to deny this permit. As you can see, there are many of us right over here in that small neighborhood that have attended, others would have liked to. If, if I might, may I have a show of hands of those who are against? Just so that you can see that. So, and I, and I know that there are a number of our neighbors who have sent in and attempted to send in emails or calls regarding their desires because they're not able to attend this meeting for various reasons, but I can assure you the vast majority, if not all, of your feedback in that way is negative. I'm assuming that you probably have those statistics. We also know that, that from news articles in the Arkansas Democrat Gazette, that the city of Fayetteville is struggling with Airbnbs because of the troubles associated with them and their occupants, their opposition from nearby homeowners who've had to deal with it. We do not want to even begin with that happening, much less wait for it to occur and then react later either by calling on our police force to deal with it or knocking on the door ourselves to complain about issues such as noise, parking, unsafe traffic such as speeding that outsiders would present. We don't even want that, that kind of confrontation, period. In today's economy, we're one of the very few nice and affordable neighborhoods remaining in northwest Arkansas, and we wish to keep it that way and not allow it to be degraded by turning it into single-level motels for football games and other festivities. You don't want to?
All right, if I could ask you to wrap it up, sir, we're past the two minutes.
And bring in groups of people who have no care for who they deserve or what they do. Lastly, how many of you have an Airbnb in your neighborhood? Any of you?
I don't even know.
And so, why not? If it's not in your backyard and you don't care about what's in our backyard, we ask you to reconsider that. So we strongly and respectfully ask for you to deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next?
Good evening, thank you for being here and hearing us out. I did not prepare anything quite as eloquent as Chip.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Barbara Bilton, B S M Boy, I L T O N, and I live at six oh three Prairie Street. Our neighborhood is a wonderful neighborhood, which is why I bought a home there, uh, seven years ago. I love my neighborhood the way it is, and I am respectfully requesting that you deny this request because this is a slippery slope, and once we, uh, tear open the sanctity of this residential neighborhood, you can't put it back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else like to speak?
And, uh.
Are we going back here?
I need to go back and get my list of people, yeah.
Linda Vanoy, five oh five Ash. My concern mainly has to do with, and I noticed, I, I read where he applied and where it said on-street parking would not be allowed, but I can tell you that, and I'm not blaming you because I don't know who your contractor was, but it's been a nightmare the last couple of weeks with the traffic that's gone in and out there, and you hate to say anything because you want people to take care of their property, you want them to do improvement. He's done a great job of that, from what I can tell from the pictures, but I am extremely concerned about on-street parking because that has been a problem with that property in the past. It, it's got a really nice setup, it, coming out there, it is a corner where the bus stop is located, and every day, the bus stop stops in front of that house to let kids off, and it becomes bottlenecked there as you try to turn off and turn on to, I think it's Robinson, forgive me, and I don't know the one that goes this way. And, um, I, my concern really lies with what is this going to do to the neighborhood as far as after the fact? Now, it's been a rental property before, but the people have always been long-term, living there a year, living there two. I think our record is three or four, I don't remember, but this concerns me with doing a thirty-day, up to thirty days was what I read in his application, that it could be rented for, and I am concerned about vendor parking coming in and what that means for on-street parking as they park a trailer in there or anything like that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Excuse me, before the next person speaks, I, I, I will bring this to your attention in case you're not aware. Uh, we do have a number of Airbnbs that have been operating in Lowell for a year or two anyway, that have come and, and received these permits, and we have a set of conditions, since this is a conditional use permit, that we have placed on each Airbnb, Airbnb that have been approved at this point. So I just wanted to, uh, let you know what that has been, because, you know, in considering this, we would certainly look at a lot of these same conditions if it were to be approved. Uh, life safety inspections once a year, so the city does have to come out and inspect it for safety. Uh, no on-street parking is allowed, you're allowed one vehicle per bedroom, uh, to be at the Airbnbs, that's what we've approved in the past. Uh, two people per bedroom is the allowable occupancy that we've put on these Airbnbs. Uh, no events, like no parties, I think, approved guests only. Uh, and we put a one-year expiration on it to where they have to come and renew it each year so we can review, have they been meeting all the conditions, everything been going okay? Have we had complaints that our city staff have had to go out and deal with? So we do put a, a, an expiration on it. And we have to have a local contact, it's like they can't have Airbnb and be living in another state, and so there has to be someone here that is actually in charge of that Airbnb. So just to let everyone know where we have been on the Airbnbs that we have operating in the city currently, uh, that is the conditions that we have, uh, put on every one of them to this point, so. Anyway, if anyone else would like to speak, the public hearing's still open, come on up and give us your name and address, but I did want you to be aware of that as we go through these discussions.
My name is Chrissiane Demiral, and I live at six oh three Ash. And I am a more recent neighbor, because of the tornado in Little Rock, I got blown up here, and I found a refuge in my neighborhood, and I appreciate what all my neighbors have said, and, you know, agree with that, but I'd also like y'all to look at it in the light that our neighborhood is at a critical point in that y'all are going to put a big roundabout and widen the street that accesses our, uh, quiet neighborhood, and that's already kind of risky and, um, you know, you said you have other Airbnbs, but maybe they're not on a road that's getting ready to be widened and change a bit, you know? So just look at it, we're already dealing with that, we just don't need another big change. And I would think that would make the Airbnb unpopular. When that happens, it's gonna get bad ratings, and it won't be maybe the nice little Airbnb that might be in a quieter neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, give us your name and address.
I'm Becky Hunley. We live at six two one Prairie Street. I just want to say this, please consider this for us, because this is an investment. It, it's not like his investment, this is our home, our families, our lives. My husband and I are getting ready to retire, a lot of us are retired. We care about our homes and our neighborhood, it's, we have very little trouble, and we just, please, consider that for us, that we care, and just, I don't know, I'm just asking, please, to help us and to consider our way, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak before we close this public hearing? All right, we did receive, uh, I think everyone got copies of the emails that were sent into the city from other residents in the area opposing that, so you should have copies of those. I'm gonna close at six twenty-two, close our public hearing down, and if you step back up, sir, I'll open it up to the commissioners. Questions, discussion, comment?
How many other Airbnbs do you manage or do you deal with?
Uh, this is our first one.
First one? Do you have any experience with rentals, properties at all, short or long-term?
Yes, we do have a long-term property, all estates.
To the best of my knowledge, we have not had any issues with any of the Airbnbs that have been brought to our attention, correct? You know, anyone that's come up for renewal has been renewed, so there's been nothing that prevented, has there been any issues?
Uh, there's been one.
There's, there's one, it's in our packet tonight, right? Or was there a different?
I'm not sure if it's in the package.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, there has been one. Yeah, uh, it was a, during the Walmart, uh, shareholders meeting.
Yeah.
They had a, uh, vendor with a trailer parked out in front on the street that caused quite a bit of calamity as far as the ingress egress on the, on the road there.
Sure.
That's the only concern. When that concern was brought to the attention of the owner.
Yes.
Uh, it was abated very quickly.
Okay. Okay, so that answers the question, we've had one issue, and they quickly corrected it when it was pointed out that was not allowed, so. Okay. All right, other questions? Comments, thoughts? So this is at the corner of Ash and Robinson, and do we know that one's a roundabout going in there? Do we know when it's scheduled or anything?
The anticipated project is to punch Robinson through to Dixieland, straight through to the west, instead of having the curve on Oakwood.
Okay.
But there's not a roundabout?
There's not a roundabout.
Not a roundabout scheduled for this intersection?
Not.
Not in the five-year plan, anyway?
Not adjacent, no, nothing in design.
Okay. All right, just so we have all that in consideration.
When is, what's the timetable for that?
We're working through some. We're working through some utility coordination. It could happen early 2026 at that start.
Has there been any study on impact of traffic flow? Do they anticipate it to increase, decrease, stay the same?
We haven't done that work, no.
Okay.
I do know there's a good amount of traffic goes down Robinson now because you have the stoplight right there on Dixieland that you could, you just have to go through the neighborhood on a curve instead of just shooting straight through. So I don't know how much it would impact traffic that's not already going on there, but a study would show that, I guess. But it is somewhat, Robinson's a pretty busy cut through. Since you live over there, you'd probably know that better than I do.
I do. Yeah, the road gets plenty of traffic. Our neighborhood has plenty of people parking on the street, as is. As I look at my neighbors out here, thinking back to our previous ones that haven't had anybody really come against them and seeing that we haven't had a whole lot of complaints on the ones we've had in the past, I'm leaning towards approving this with our standard conditions of one year. That a way if it were to come up and as the owner here representing, you see what's behind you, you would have to make sure you're running a tight ship. That's how I'm leaning right now.
And I, I live just on Concord, so I'm in the neighborhood too. And I tend to agree. You know, we've done this in the past. We've taken time to look at the conditions to address what we would feel would be concerns even before they were brought to us, which is on-street parking, the number of guests, no events, making sure life safety is taken care of first and foremost, and limiting to one-year contracts so that if, if there is an issue, as with this other, if there's an issue and it's not taken care of, then there's an opportunity for us to revoke, revoke it so that it cannot be extended. So I would be in line with my fellow commissioner here, too.
And I would point out, if there are issues, it can be revoked before the one year.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It doesn't like, well, we'll have to wait until the year to revoke it. If there are issues, we certainly have the ability to revoke those throughout that year. So just make sure everyone's aware of that. But yes, I mean, we certainly have taken a lot of consideration into the surrounding neighbors and the ones that have been approved up to this point. We understand on-street parking is one of the biggest problems that picks off right away, group parties, fifteen people being there. That's all issues that none of us want in the house next door, regardless of where we live in the city. And so we do take this as a very serious thing. We understand that, that people have the houses and instead of getting long-term leases, some of them want to do the Airbnbs. And we know there's a need for that, being in the market that we're in with the Walmart and all the people that come in for Razorback Games and other things. We know there's a market for Airbnb in North Arkansas and so on. We just try to balance out, how, how can we work with everyone to make sure it's not an issue? And so far, it's worked pretty well, as, as, don't even stand over here.
We know how many conditional uses we have for the short-term rentals in our city right now?
Not up here, no.
Would you say it's more or less?
We had discussed putting a limit on it at one point, but it never passed through council.
But it's not like, we don't have dozens out there at the moment. It's just, it's a small group.
Less than ten, it's safe to say.
Right, we don't have, we don't have large numbers. If it gets to be large numbers, I certainly would look at, we don't want every other house in a neighborhood to be an Airbnb for sure. I think we have three in one neighborhood, probably the biggest grouping we have.
In Lakewood.
I'm aware of in any neighborhood, there's three of them in the same neighborhood. All right, other thoughts? Anyone want to make a motion? What do you want to do with this?
No other questions, or they make a motion to approve the CUP for a short-term rental?
I'll second.
Yeah, with the.
With the conditions that we put on every other.
Okay, I was saying, I want to make sure.
Additional conditions.
With the aforementioned conditions that I listed, with the life and safety inspection, all of our usual conditions. Do anyone see a need for anything additional? Or do you think that covers it? This is the time.
No, because just, you know, the one issue that was just mentioned, that's actually addressed in the no-on-street parking.
Right.
That would have, right, okay, yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay.
Yep.
We have a motion properly made and seconded to approve the conditional use permit with our standard Airbnb conditions and restrictions. Roll call, please.
James Walker.
Yes.
Tim Cox.
Yes.
Frank Musivnik.
Yes.
Darren Rock.
Yes.
Tony Kostarowski.
Yes.
Chase Hendrix.
Yes.
Motion to approve Shang Studio LLC conditional use permit for an Airbnb is approved.
All right, sir, we'll see you in a year.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we won't see you before a year, right? All right, thank you. All right, our next item of business is a renewal of a conditional use permit for Airbnb. How, how good timing is this? Seven-Eleven Court Site, Thomas Simpkins. This will also be a public hearing. Come right on up, give us your name and address.
Thomas Simpkins. We live one thousand three Belmar Circle in Cave Springs and the property's Seven-Eleven Court Site Avenue, seeking renewal for another year of short-term rental.
Okay. This is a public hearing as well on the renewal of this conditional use permit. So step back just a moment, sir. Open that up at six thirty-one. If anyone would like to speak for or against the renewal of this Airbnb conditional use permit at Seven-Eleven Court Site, we'd love to hear from you. All right, seeing none, we'll close at six thirty-two. Step back up, please, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Didn't have the attendance to turn on.
So i- is this the location where we had the vendor issue?
Yep. We did have the trailer, just within a day, we got it down.
But it was quickly dealt with, and we appreciate that. I mean, that's the.
We went ahead and bold and highlighted the no parking on our listing as well.
Okay, all right.
It's been a, was it, was it, just curious, was it a pretty large trailer? Because you got a pretty large driveway there.
There is a, there is a picture of it in our.
Yeah, I don't know. I.
It looks like one of those like twelve-foot pool behind pickup drivers.
You're also assuming somebody would sort of back up a trailer into a driveway.
Yeah, I would, would hope that somebody's driving a trailer would, but you're right. You're absolutely right. Yeah, I mean, as long as the, stuff's going to happen, right? Nothing's going to be perfect.
Right.
But as long as it's addressed and addressed and, and the owners made adjustments to highlight, to, to point it out to the next renters.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think that's why we have the condition in there, that there has to be a local manager, someone that we can get in touch with that can immediately address these concerns. And that, and we thank you, that was, that was done as it needed to be done, quickly taken care of. All right.
How often would you say you would visit that property and set your eyes on it?
Uh, once a month, at least. Yeah, I would have to go check the mail.
Okay. Fair.
Is it frequently rented?
It is. It's actually top one percent on Airbnb.
Really?
Country, yeah. In terms of ratings, reviews, occupancy, everything.
Okay.
A pool hidden in the back?
So we, hell, um, it's a.
So you've got a pool hidden in the back?
Oh, we have the hot tub in. We have, veterans have been there. We had some people come here volunteering for some veterinary work as well. So we get a lot of, lot of in-state traffic, it seems like, yeah.
Just for my own curiosity, what's the average length of stay typically?
A week, usually, I would say. We get up to, you know, thirty days at the end. And we get a couple of those, but generally, it's people staying for a full week.
Interesting, okay.
No other questions?
No.
They'll make a motion to approve the CUP with the, our normal Airbnb restrictions for twelve months.
All right.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion properly made and seconded to renew with the same conditions it had originally. Roll call, please.
Tim Cox.
Yes.
Frank Musivnik.
Yes.
Darren Rock.
Yes.
Tony Kostarowski.
Yes.
Chase Hendrix.
Yes.
Did I leave anybody out? James Walker.
Uh, yes, for me.
Give yes.
I think James answered for me.
Oh.
Tim Cox, yes.
Motion to approve the Thomas, Thomas Simpkins renewal conditional use permit for Airbnb is approved with standard requirements.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, we have a review of a conditional use permit for thirteen eighteen Tudor Street with Eric Holder. Come right on up, sir. Give us your name and address and.
Thirteen eighteen Tudor Street, my name's Eric Holder. And we're here to answer questions and address abatement issues for things that came up.
Yes, okay. So this review here, which we have a public hearing coming as well, this is looking at violations of the conditional use permit with a possible revocation. We've had some complaints of issues that have arisen at this location. We had, oh, I'm on the wrong one, hold on just a second. There we go. We granted this back in June to allow for agricultural, remember, we'd allowed for three goats and I think sixteen rabbits was what had been granted for this house that was on Tudor Street. And we've had some, some complaints about increased number of house flies in the area, a nuisance odor, and a nuisance noise. And we've had an investigation by the city's gone out and named this. And have you verified that those are an issue?
It did verify those issues at the time and since have followed up with some investigative, also communicating with Mr. Holden here that owns the property and some of the things that he's done to abate those issues.
All right, have you seen much improvement then?
Well, the goats are gone.
Okay.
That smell is gone. That noise is gone.
Okay.
As far as the rabbits, my last conversation with him, we were going to do something a little different with the rabbits and I, I haven't followed up on that.
Okay. But the goat was the primary problem with the smell and the noise?
The smell from the goats and actually in addition to that, the smell from the rabbit fecal matter. But he explained what the situation was on that and what he was going to do to eliminate that, that problem, so.
Okay. So that's where we stand right now. We do have a, a public hearing on this, correct? This one is a public hearing?
Yes, we do.
Yep, so if you'll step back for just a moment, six thirty-eight, I'm going to open the public hearing up. So if anyone would like to speak either for or against revoking this conditional use permit, we'd love to hear from your comments. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. If you step back up, please, sir.
Sir.
All right. I'll open it up for questions with our commissioners here.
What's the remediation that's been taken for the rabbits?
So since I've talked to David, also, we have decided to reduce the number of rabbits, adult rabbits. We're only going to go down, we're going down to just two breeding pair, two males, two females. And then I'm going to get a shed because we went to a, another couple who had did the same thing in Missouri. And they had everything in a actual building structure, you know? And they had screens on the vents. They had put a in, a heating air type thing in there for them and everything. And we've decided that's the best thing for us to go to because that will help abate the flies because we can screen the vents so, you know, flies can't come in. And then that will help eliminate that. The smell, the goats, I think were definitely probably most of the smell. But the fecal matter will be inside the building. We're going to be dramatically reducing the number of rabbits we have. So it'll be much more manageable to get that manure, you know, relocated to where we have, you know, to take it. And then, of course, you know, the goats were the, if the noise was the goats, I mean, the rabbits don't make much noise.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect the rabbits to make a noise.
No, no. But, but we did, but we also are going to look at doing the shed also because of the weather extremes. You know, we actually lost a couple rabbits due to the really extreme heat. We put ice bottles in there. We had solar-powered fans going and everything. We just, and it was just, we, the couple of breeds, we just couldn't get them cool enough. And last year, this issue became a problem because we were trying to mitigate the cold and where we placed them for that, you know, allowed the smell. So we are going to use that shed, put them in, and we're going to use, thanks to David's mentioning, going to metal containers instead of any kind of wood on the containers to help reduce any kind of absorption of the urine and any other smells. So, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a work in progress. You know, nothing's going to be done correctly the first time around. You know, you've got to learn as you go. And we are more than happy to modify what we're doing so that we can continue to do what we're trying to do, but also not affect our neighbors negatively. I mean, we, we've got to come to a, a happy medium.
Absolutely.
And so that's what we're looking at doing is just going down, like I said, two breeding pairs, specifically, the, the four that we're choosing are specific because of their, they're the higher-end rabbits. If you were going to, you know, look at that, they're, they're good meat rabbits, but their pelts, you know, are, are good, the De Argent and the Silver Fox.
So the offspring of these is where you're looking, just processing?
Yes, processing and.
At what age do they get before they're?
Sixteen weeks?
No, it's six months.
Six months, six months. So, and they get up to six months, you know, and we process them. You know, and some of them, you know, you, you might have a runt or two that you've got to wait an extra couple of weeks here and there, but, you know. But again, we're, we're not, we're not processing more than one group at one, I mean, breeding one group at one time. And we're not breeding anything during the wintertime, again, because with the extreme colds that we do tend to get, especially January, February, it's, it's just, it's a little harder to manage having babies at that time, so. But again, I don't know if you have on our deal, we're going to be running the shed. It's going to be to the north of the patio pad. And we're going to do it six feet west of the house wall. All right? And that, that way I can run, because I have a power outlet over there that I can run the electricity for the heating or cooling unit that we want to put in there.
Well, just make sure you check with city code on where that's allowed to be.
Yes, sir, that's, that's, I was advised to hold off until we talk here and then go from there. And I got to make sure I get my city codes and all that.
Right, because the codes will dictate where it cannot be so close to other, you know, properties in the house.
Fire code requires structures to be ten feet apart.
Okay, well, then we can do ten feet apart, no problem. It's on the opposite side of our septic system, so.
Right.
You know, but yeah, we're going to get, I'm going to get all the, you know, the details, you know.
Yeah, make sure you, you get all the details because we don't want to have another problem, right? It's like, oh, no, now we've got a building where it cannot be.
I agree.
Let's not create more issues.
But yeah, but I think that with this, with the, the things that we're doing now and eliminating the goats from the property.
Okay, so from the complaints we've had, your, your proposed solution is no more goats and reduced from, what was it originally, sixteen rabbits, I think?
It was eight adults and eight babies, yes.
So now we're looking at basically cutting that in half.
Correct. Four, four adults, still up to eight kids.
Right, because we don't know how many could be born in a litter. That may vary.
Correct.
But we're looking at four adults that will be permanent and litters that could grow up to six, seven months before they're processed.
Correct.
That's his proposed solution. So now we open it up.
Within a confined structure.
And, and within a confined structure, not using wood structure-type stuff to, that would absorb odors, but going to a metal container-type thing that would be able to be cleaned out and not.
And sanitized, yes, sir.
And not be continuing issue. The question, we open up now for discussion.
So then an enclosed structure is still going to be, have to be vented out, correct?
Correct. And the vents will be still, the, the structures come with, you know, the vents on the topping. But what we're going to do is just put a really fine steel mesh so the air can still transfer in and out, but bugs cannot get in or out. And that's where we're going to, we're going to put that on any, any area that may have a vintage area.
Does that have an option for like carbon filters or anything to deal with any odors that would be coming out of there?
I mean, that would be, you know, they have those charcoal, they have those charcoal filters that you can cut. And that's, I mean, I'm more than willing to do that as well if it, if it.
I'm just wondering how much of an issue it would be with odors still at that point. I know we're cutting down.
And, and the, again, like he said, the one issue we had was the, the new hutch that we built. When I built it to put the containers in for the fecal matter. Put them in there, they got, whether it was the wind or one of the dog, you know, knocked it in there or something, it got tilted this way. And I have the drain holes in it, but they were flat. So when it got cantered, it was able to hold fluid, which, that's where, because when we went out there to change the boxes, the one that was tilted, that's where the flies were, and that's where the smell was from. And because once we eliminated that, it, we didn't have any problems, the flies dissipated naturally, and then, of course, the smell dissipated. But since then, we, I put a new block under there to keep that from being able to be pushed in and have a similar situation.
So what's your schedule for completion of this storage unit?
I mean, the shed, it's, I would say as long as I can get with them and have, you know, timeframe on them, I would say two weeks from within I can get whatever details I need done.
City approvals.
Right, exactly like that, yeah. I mean, within probably two weeks to a month at the most. I mean, of course, luckily, we're coming into some colder weather, so that will help out with insect activity and stuff. But, but I, you know, within, I would say before Christmas, we can have this done. Because I'm, I mean, I'm not going out and buying a two thousand dollar, you know, shirt, wooden shed and stuff like that. You know, we're gonna get to do this to make sure that it's gonna work, and then if this does work, eventually, you know, we can do that, so. And it will be a metal shed, that we can, again, we can clean it, sanitize it, and that will help out with the, any odor control.
And there's, there's no other external building on your property besides your house, right?
No, we have a, it's, it's the remnants of a shed, but there's no walls on it, it's just basically four posts and a roof in the very back. It's the northwest corner of the property. It's there, it's just something I haven't taken down, but it's not on any kind of pattern like that, it's just.
It's just four posts with this roof.
Yeah, and it's, it's like this tall. I mean, I, when I first moved there, I tried to put my lawnmower in there, and I, I wound up having problems getting it in and out, so. We just haven't even used it, but I just haven't bothered to take it down yet.
Thoughts?
We feel like the goats were primarily the noise and odor.
Oh, yes, sir.
I'd be amendable to, or open to, I should say, amending the conditional use that we provided to remove the goats and potentially reduce the number of rabbits from sixteen to some other number, it sounds like maybe twelve or eight.
Four adults plus?
Four adults plus.
Whatever size the litter is, yeah.
That's just my, my thoughts on this, keeping the same timeframe of one year from the original date. And maybe asking our staff to do a follow-up, you know, six weeks or so from whenever that building's put in to see how things are going.
We have a good rapport as far as communication back and forth.
Glad to hear that.
Don't see any trouble there.
All right. I think commissioners, would that be satisfactory rather than a hundred percent revocation of the conditional use permit? Would it be satisfactory to amend the permit to remove the goats and reduce the adults down to four plus the?
And just a suggestion, obviously not a requirement, but a suggestion that you might wanna take all of this information and put it in some concise form and distribute it to your neighbors so they know
Okay.
what the plan is, what you're doing, that you're working with the city, so that.
Right.
They understand.
Our north and south neighbors, we conversed with them, and they've been fairly interested in what we're doing. They're the only two that we have any kind of rapport with. Not because it's negative, it's just we, you know, have gotten around.
Yep, want an official motion on that?
I can make it if no one else has any other questions or comments. I would move that we amend the conditional use permit to remove the three goats from there and reduce the rabbits to four adult rabbits plus their broods.
All right. That's sufficient? Everyone like that?
Let it to expire on its current expiration date.
Doesn't change the expiration, it's just amending what's currently in place.
Do we, do we wanna stipulate in the conditional use some of the things that they're gonna do as a requirement? This way, if somebody else was to come to us, we could just go back to this and say, here's the conditions that were applied to, like we do with the Airbnbs. It's got this, 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 and this. I think if he says, I think if he says he's gonna do it, we should put it in there to hold it.
In that case, maybe.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Let's talk this out before we write this last part down.
Right, so you're looking at a metal container.
Your attorney needs your attention.
Just wondering, it turns out we end up with a better solution, although it's that one doesn't quite work because of something. If you hold them to just the one solution, might not be able to maybe change without coming back in here, so.
I understand.
Maybe some mitigating, you know, some mitigating efforts.
Something that's vague and detailed all at once.
Or maybe what we do is we just wait, let.
At the renewal time?
Work out with the city, come up with what works. If, within the year period, there's no problems, then we can investigate what was done and then set that as a standard going forward. Assuming that no one else.
So maybe at this time, put a condition on it that continues to work with city staff to mitigate all current issues.
Any complaints, so yeah.
Just remove the goats.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so removing the goats, we are reducing the adults to four, your two breeding pairs, and then breeding pairs and then plus whatever litter size.
Okay.
And continue to work with city staff to mitigate any complaints and issues.
You look forward to it.
Good with all that?
Is that clear as mud?
I have down, amend the CUP to remove three goats, reduce to four adults and broods, and continue to work with city staff.
Perfect, works for me.
That'll work.
That sounds like my motion.
All right, do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Tony.
Second over here. All right, we have a motion properly made, second to amend the conditional use permit as noted. Roll call, please.
Okay, James Walker?
Yes.
Tim Cox?
Yes.
Frank Musovnik?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Tony Kozarowski?
Yes.
And Chase Hendricks?
Yes.
Motion to approve Matt Garrett's rezon, no, no, let me take that out. I didn't change that, did I? Motion to approve Eric Holder's review of the conditional use permit. He's going to amend the CUP to remove three goats, reduce it to four adults and rabbits to four adults and broods, and continue to work with city staff.
Thank you, sir, for working with the city to get to where we're at now, so.
It all starts somewhere, we're more than happy to work it out to where, you know, it might be something that everybody gets into.
Okay.
All right.
Appreciate that, thank you. All right, the last item is an amendment to our land development code. So who would like to give us a taste of what this is here?
Earlier this year, state law was changed for accessory dwelling units. So now our code basically does not conform to state code, and we're needing to make some changes. What we're doing tonight is just a public hearing, which we have to hold for chapter sixteen before it goes on to city council to actually amend the code, so we need your recommendation in a public hearing tonight.
Okay.
Really what we're doing is we're striking language in our code that is no longer compliant with the new state code. The new state code does allow an accessory dwelling unit for every lot that has a single family dwelling. And they do have it determined by size, which in state code, it can be, you know, no, it's minimums of seventy-five percent square foot of the dwelling unit or thousand square foot, whichever is minimum. There's not a whole lot of restrictions they placed on it, there's very few. So we're just amending our code to meet that.
So, so let me make sure I understand, so that's allowing a second residential dwelling on the same property?
Without coming to you for a conditional use permit. You know, we don't have a say in that.
Okay.
So that, that has to be stricken.
Right, I understand. Just make sure I understand what they're saying it's gonna be now, so.
Right, and in our code, we do have a portion of the code that has accessory building definition in it. So not to confuse the accessory building portion of the code with accessory dwelling, we have added a clause in here describing the accessory dwelling. So basically, what we've added is the accessory dwelling unit shall follow the minimum dimension requirements of the zoning district. So they'll fall within the same setbacks as your zoning district, which the state does allow us to have. And I think that's about the only regulation they allow us to place on it. And an accessory dwelling unit shall not be restricted to the provisions of an accessory building. So accessory building has a lot of limitations in our code. We can define where these accessory buildings go on the lot, and the place behind the main structure can't be closer than seven and a half feet from the rear property line. They're supposed to match the main structure, none of that can be held to the accessory dwelling unit. So that's why we had to separate those by definition. So really, that's what the changes were made, we can't really add a whole lot to this, any restrictions.
So now a lot could have two residential buildings plus an accessory building that's not dwelling.
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
And then, I think before we had, there was a situation where somebody was putting a livable quarters in a, and we stated that you can't have a renter in there, this changes that, correct?
That changes that, you can no longer dictate that either.
Yeah, yeah.
It cannot, right now, our code says, has to be an immediate family member, that's stricken from state law. So you can't restrict that either. And, and I know in the past you guys have regulated that the accessory dwelling units, you know, you've regulated their size and their look, and that they had to be placed to the rear of the property or behind the front facade of the building. That can no longer be stated. If they have room on the lot, they can place it on the lot, within the setbacks.
Right, they can put them side by side.
In theory, somebody could put a accessory dwelling unit up and call it an Airbnb and we can't do anything about it.
Can't do anything about it, you cannot restrict the parking. So on these new, this new law, we can't say that because you have an accessory dwelling unit, you have to add additional parking to your lot. They're not allowing us to do that.
And of course, there's no opportunity to get somebody who wrote this to explain why, what they were thinking or anything like that, right?
I wish they were here tonight, we have some questions.
We didn't get invited to that public hearing, did we?
Technically, yes.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so now that we know the changes, let's have a public hearing.
Yeah.
We have a public hearing on this. Six fifty-eight, if anyone would like to speak for or against our recommending the passing of this correction to our land code here. Come on out and up and speak. All right, we'll, we'll close that public hearing, we've had a public hearing now.
It really boggles my mind, I just don't understand the basis for this, what brought this to there?
Kinda helps that we really don't have a choice, I guess. We need our land development code to match state law, so we're looking for a recommendation. Do we recommend the city council change our land development code to match state law, or do we recommend them not? That's where we're at tonight, right?
The only thing I can see that's being beneficial, mother-in-law suites.
Yeah.
Was where?
Mother-in-law suites.
Mother-in-law suites.
Yeah, but, but put requirements on it, it's wide open.
I mean, you have your mother-in-law.
Well, if you don't like your mother-in-law, you put a shed out there and call it an accessory dwelling unit, then you're fine.
I'll make a motion to approve, I guess.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, roll call, please, we've had a motion to approve.
James Walker?
Yes.
Tim Cox?
Yes.
Frank Musovnik?
Yes.
Aaron Brock?
Yes.
Tony Kozarowski?
Yes.
And, oh, he's not here, Chase Hendricks?
Yes.
Motion to approve, to recommend to city council to approve the amendment to the land development code is approved.
Recommended approval, yes, there we go, all right. Okay, our next meeting is scheduled for the first of December. Wow, December's about here, guys. The Christmas parade, it will be the following Saturday, December sixth, at six P M., followed by the lighting of the Christmas tree and the Christmas market at Wardnell Park, so. Exciting things are coming. Anything else we need to bring up? All right, well, we'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven o'clock straight up, good, and one hour on the nose. Thought it might go a little later, I'm glad we got it done by seven. I thought with the goats, the goats from Airbnb, I thought we'd be here past seven.
I did, too, I really did.
And, you know, I don't know.
And I thought we wouldn't approve it.
Well, I wasn't sure.
How's your leg?
It's better.
Better?
I took the brace off today, so we'll see what happens.
Were you supposed to take the brace off?
Yes, to let the muscles grow up, that's what I was doing.
Okay, just checking.
All right, thank you.
I know they brought up all the standards that we're screaming about Airbnb's, but we haven't had those issues with any Airbnb's, so it really feels right to deny this guy an Airbnb, we approved all the others and there's been no issues.
I don't know.
I like our renewal process, though, so if we get a bad Airbnb, we can deal with it.
Yes, we can.
I think that's the important part, we can deal with it, but on this. Here, these back open?
Yeah, leave them open.
So they, they were around. Pretty far off that property line going around there. They could use a machine with a big pile of rice here, that could burn. Yeah, let me do that, I got a copy.
Yeah, I saw him.
Did you?
Three pages, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
That house on the corner of Dixon Land and.
Yeah, this area?
Yeah, like one, three acres. I'm going to my house in this area before I bought this.
We know one of them got that. I know, I like to work this for a while, because right now it's a residential use.
Right.
It's all zone commercial, and I would take it, I would do a lot of, I would lease off that home. And then I would take that back property, so that's a commercial loan.
Because the one next to it is also personal.
You just take the money, pay off there, you just got residential.
Yeah, I'm always on the wrong side of those decisions, so I don't really look to do that anymore, just say, yeah, I just give. But yeah. I could, I could, because same thing, when I saw the address put on a Zillow, I'm like, that has to be wrong.
Yeah, but leave it one outside.
Yeah, so she mentioned it yesterday, she said, she was on the, she said, you already got a house sold. So I didn't get the chance to look at it, you know.
So I didn't get the chance to look at it, you know. I think she did, cause I think I saw her.
Well, I hope for him, they could do it, is he couldn't help but check land. And he's building his own home, it's over here in the corner of the back.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, well, appreciate what you guys do. You too. Okay.